DD India News, our India's voice to the world. I'm Abhishek Mahajan, coming up in the next hour. Legislative Assembly of Jammu and Kashmir to hold a single-day special session to pay obituaries to the victims of Pelgam terror attack, even as Kashmir starts welcoming tourists back to the valley. Further firepower to bolster Indian Navy's blue-water capabilities as India poised to finalize rupees 63,000 crore deal for the acquisition of 26 Rafal Marine fighter jets from France. Canadian voters all set to cast ballots on Monday. Incumbent Liberal Prime Minister Mahkarni and Conservative Pierre Polivra face off in a crucial election. Donald Trump urges Russia to stop attacks in Ukraine, warns that the US might walk away from peace efforts if there is no progress. Cardinals at the Vatican prepared to pick a date for the conclave to elect a new pope, meeting today at 700 GMT likely to fix the date. And in sports, Liverpool clinch recordy cooling 20th Premier League title with Tottenham Hotspur 5-1 in front of home crowd at Anfield to win the trophy. And Legislative Assembly of Union Territory of Jammu and Kashmir will hold a one-day special session on Monday to discuss the devastating terror attack in Pelgam that claimed 26 lives. Left-in-Governor Manoj Sinha has called the session, which will address the recent terror attack, and the members will pay obituaries to the victims. The assembly will pay tribute to the victims of the attack, followed by a discussion on the incident and related developments. A resolution condemning the terror attack in strong terms is also likely to be adopted during the assembly. And days after the devastating terror attack in Pelgam, the serene valley in Jammu and Kashmir is gradually returning to a sense of normalcy. Despite the terror attack, holidayers and tourists were spotted returning to the picturesque resort town of Pelgam. A heartening scene unfolded on the streets of Pelgam over the weekend as tourists strolled through the town, bringing a wave of resilience, optimism, a sense of normalcy and hope back to the region. Stakeholders said that after experiencing a significant disruption in tourism following the April 22 terror attack, they have welcomed more than 7,000 holidaymakers in the past three days. Several domestic and foreign tourists who turned up at Pelgam during the weekend said it is the Kashmiri hospitality and bolstered security that they decided to visit the place.
But even here, markets are still running, Pelgam. There's no such thing as a family reunion. Here, Indian Army is here, the government is here, they are with us. Here, tourists, local people are with us. But here, local people and Indian Army have supported us a lot and said that there is no problem here. Now, come here, Pelgam, too.
We feel very safe and your country is very beautiful and we haven't any problem in this staying here.
I have total safe, no problem. It's everything slowly, safe, good feeling, no problem.
We heard about this incident before we left our countries, but despite of everything, we decided to come because this is the journey we have been planning for years. And we know that the country is beautiful and we knew that we can expect only good things here. Thank you very much. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Kashmir.
In yet another incident of ceasefire violation, Pakistani army posts resorted to unprovoked small arms fire across the line of control targeting areas opposite Kupwara and Puns districts in Jammu and Kashmir. As per the information, the incident occurred on the intervening night of April 27 and 28. However, Indian army responded promptly to counter the aggression. This was the fourth consecutive night that Pakistan resorted to unprovoked firing along the L O C. Another news just coming in on the recommendations of the Ministry of Home Affairs. Government of India has banned following Pakistani YouTube channels for disseminating provocative and communally sensitive content, false and misleading narratives and misinformation against India, its army and security agencies in the backdrop of the tragic Pelgam terror incident in Jammu and Kashmir. All right, we'll go across to DD India's Vishal Barstow. He's joining us live from Srinagar. Vishal, tourists are expressing confidence. Tell us, is Pelgam slowly returning to normal? Are the tourists continuing their travel plans? What are you witnessing at the ground? What are the changes that you've observed?
Well, a very good morning to you, Abhishek. Yes, indeed, tourists have started coming back to Kashmir. Yesterday, I spoke to some of them at the Dachigam National Park and I've also interviewed some of them at the Lalchok and Srinagar. And we are also getting to hear that tourists are turning back in Pelgam, the very place which was under attack few days back. Yes, there has been a devastating attack, but the National Investigation Agency and also the Joint Operation of Jammu and Kashmir Police along with the Indian Army are taking care of the situation. Right now, I'm here at the Dul Lake. I would ask my cameraman to show you. There is not much of an activity here because today is Monday. Yesterday, there were a lot of shikaras. There you see, man taking his shikara and the houseboats behind me. So, today, we are expecting that by afternoon, tourists would come and visit this place. But as when we talk about Pelgam, yes, Pelgam is witnessing tourists once again. Abhishek?
Also, Vishal, while the efforts are on to bring normalcy back, there have been unprovoked firing along the L O C at Kupwara and Puns sector, ceasefire violations happening at the border. From India's side also, NIA has taken over the probe. India have also banned Pakistan YouTube channels. Tell us, what more information do you have on this?
Well, absolutely, this is a very good step taken by the Ministry of Home Affairs because for some days, we have been witnessing all kinds of nonsense. This is all posturing by Pakistan, disseminating wrong and false information, questioning the security of Indian Defence Forces and the security of Kashmir. So, it's a welcome step here. But let me also tell you that apart from that, you spoke about the unprovoked firing. Now, these firings are all are an attempt to, you know, encourage infiltration and Indian Army is always aware of that because whenever there is an unprovoked firing, you mentioned Kupwara and Puns. This is last night, we are talking about 27, 26 and 27 intervening night. But there have been four such incidents on the L O C, which is the line of control that divides India and Pakistan. So, Indian forces are well aware of the attempts by Pakistan because they are trying to distract the attention of the armed forces at the L O C and at the same time trying to encourage infiltrators. Or maybe there is an attempt to bring back their own people like those associated with the A L E T or Jashir Mohammed. So, these attempts will continue and Indian Army is giving a befitting reply to these infiltration attempts and also the unprovoked firing.
All right, Vishal, we'll leave it at that. Thank you for the time being, but yes, we'll keep taking updates from you. Indian diaspora members on Sunday protested in various countries against the Pelgam terror attack. In a strong show of solidarity with the victims of the Pelgam terror attack, the Indian diaspora in France organized a mass protest at the iconic Eiffel Tower on Sunday. Dozens of members from the Indian community gathered, holding placards, chanting slogans and waving Indian flags, sending out a loud and clear message against terrorism and its alleged sponsors. In the United States, the members of Indian community in a solemn gathering paid tribute in Washington DC to the innocent lives lost in Pelgam terror attack. Members of the Indian community residing in different cities of Australia, including Canberra and Sydney, came together and held marches in solidarity with India in the wake of the terror attack. The Indian diaspora also held a march in Frankfurt, Germany, showing support for the India in the wake of the Pelgam terror attack. Members of the Indian community also held a protest outside the Pakistan High Commission in London. The protesters condemned the attack and Pakistan's alleged involvement. People in the northeastern Indian state of Sikkim gathered in gang talk on Sunday to condemn the recent terror attack at Pelgam. A solemn candle march led by Chief Minister Prem Singh Tamang was organized, which saw a large turnout of government officials, public representatives and ordinary citizens. The Sikkim CM expressed deep sadness over the attack and said that the people of Sikkim stand firmly against terrorism in all its forms. As the 48-hour deadline given to Pakistani nationals present in India on SAHQ visas to leave ends on Sunday, April 27, as of now, 5:36 Pakistanis have returned via Atari Vaga Joint Checkpost in Amritsar. Meanwhile, a total of 8:36 Indians have also returned from Pakistan till Sunday evening. The decision instructing Pak nationals to leave India was taken during the Central Committee on Security Meeting called on April 23 in the aftermath of the Pelgam terrorist attack, a day before in which 26 tourists were killed. All right, DD India's Gurmeet Singh joins us from Atari border. He has more information on this. Gurmeet, exit deadline for the 12 categories of short-term visa holders of the neighboring nation ended on Sunday. What are you witnessing at the ground? Any extension given to the holders?
See, right now, we are reporting from Atari border, integrated checkpoint where a lot of Pakistani nationals are still reaching to cross over the border. And first of all, I would like to show you the visuals of the Pakistani nationals who are reaching here to cross over the border to Pakistan. And one interesting fact that has been seen and noticed today also that the Pakistani nationals who were expected to come here, they should have been the medical visa holders. But a lot of people who are coming in, they are short-term visa holders also, including tourist visa and various other visa under the 12 categories that you have just talked about. However, the deadline has crossed, that was the 27th of April. But today also, the Pakistani nationals, we have talked to them, but they are saying that wherever they were in India, they contacted the local administration and the police administration. They informed them that they can still cross over the border, they would be allowed. So, few Pakistani nationals with the short-term visas are coming in and trying to cross over the border with their valid documents. First of all, I would like to show you the visuals of the Atari border over here. You can see right in front of me, the BASF personals are here and whosoever, if Pakistani nationals want to go inside the immigration office, the very first thing BASF personnel would check their documents, their passport and valid documents, and then they would be given green signal to go inside the immigration, counter-immigration office. So, right there, you can see few vehicles standing parked outside the immigration office. They are waiting for their number to come and then they will enter inside the immigration office for get their immigration done, get their immigration cleared. So, earlier, there was, the information was that 27th April is the last date for all short-term visa holders. But on-ground, the situation is that short-term visa holders are still turning up to the Atari border. Yesterday evening, we talked to the Protocol Officer of Atari border. He gave information to the media that two-days extension has been given. So, after that, we are seeing on the ground that short-term visa holders are still reaching Atari border to cross over the border to Pakistan.
Gurmeet, also, Indians also continue to come from Pakistan through the international land border crossing. Tell us about the entire process, how has been the process? Is it running smoothly without any trouble?
Yes, it is running quite smoothly, but there are few issues. Some people were in the state of dichotomy, were in the state of fix at the time when they were getting their immigration cleared. Like, in few cases, it was seen that if the mother is having Indian passport and she's married to someone in Pakistan, having kids, who are having Pakistani passport, so they were in the state of dichotomy. Whether the mother would be given entrance to Pakistan and would be given green signal from the Indian side. So, there was some confusion pervading. However, with the time, all the confusions have been resolved and the authorities have assured them that with the time, they're all problems or questions whichever in their mind would be resolved. But right now, how the process is happening, that I would like to tell you that if Pakistani nationals approaching Atari border, so the very first thing that they would do, they would go towards the immigration and custom counter. They would get their passport and visa cleared from there. And after getting the stamp from there, they would enter the Pakistani side of immigration and custom counter. They would get their immigration done from that side and then enter their homeland. The same way, Indians are also following the same process from the Pakistani side and they are first approaching the Pakistani Immigration and Custom Office, they're getting their documents cleared from there, then entering the Indian Immigration and Custom side and getting their documents cleared and entering their homeland. So, this process is happening this way that in the morning time at Atari border, we are seeing Pakistani nationals going towards the Atari border, integrated checkpoint and after 1 or 2 PM, we are seeing Indians who are coming from Pakistan, they come out of the integrated checkpoint Atari border.
All right, Gurmeet, we'll leave it at that. Thank you for your inputs. And India has conveyed its strong sentiments to the BBC India head regarding its reporting on the Pelgam terror attack. ASXPD conveyed the country's strong sentiments to Jackie Martin, India head BBC regarding their reporting on the terror attack. Former letter has been written to BBC on terming terrorists as militants in their news dispatches. Spokesperson External Affairs will be monitoring the reporting of the BBC. All right, we are slipping into a very short break. On the other side, more stories. Keep watching DD India News. Welcome back. You're watching DD India News, our Ram Abhishek Mahajan. Union Minister Dr. Jitendra Singh visited Udhampur on Sunday, where he conducted a review of the security arrangements. Speaking on security concerns, Dr. Jitendra Singh said that appropriate security responses will be ensured. He also assured to ensure peace and safety and appreciated the role of Indian army in keeping the morale of general public high through their strategic presence at sensitive points. The minister said the security forces had spelt out a plan to keep the confidence of the general public high and not let them feel insecure by any means. Now, India and France are set to sign rupees 63,000 crore deal for 26 Rafal Marine combat aircraft. The report also claimed officials from the Indian Defence Ministry and the French Ambassador to India will represent the two sides at the signing event. The 26 Rafal Marine fighter jets are urgently required for deployment on the Indian aircraft carriers, particularly INS Vikrant, which is now in service. The Rafal M jets will be customized to meet Indian requirements and will be integrated into INS Vikrant. These carrier bonefighters are being acquired as a stop-gap solution until the development of an indigenous carrier bonefighter jet is completed. All right, DD India's Akshay Dongre has more information on this. He's joining us on the phone line. Akshay, India-France set to sign the deal. India's defence modernization efforts touch a major milestone. Tell us, help us understand the significance of Rafal jets.
Well, Abhishek, you see, what we are looking at right now is a major transition and as you rightly mentioned, a modernization drive as well for the Indian Defence Forces. As of now, what we have when it comes to the naval air power, which means that the aircraft, the fighter jets that are operated from the two aircraft carriers that India has, then India has right now make 29K aircraft and the other older aircraft have already been decommissioned. So, while the Indian Armed Forces along with DRDO, ADA, that is the Aerial Development Authority, RANOTIC Development Authority are already developing their own variant of stages for the naval variant that's called the TED BF, the carrier-based aircraft indigenously. It's going to take some time for the TED BF to be included, tested and fully developed and manufactured and then brought into the Indian Navy. Till that time, the gap that is left between today and the induction of the TED BF aircraft, that is also going to be a 4.5 generation aircraft and later on, perhaps a fifth generation too. Then, there is a gap of about 10 years, 10 to 15 years before they are properly inducted into the Indian Navy to be operated from the aircraft. So, for that time being, these 26 Marine Rafals that are to be bought are going to prove, you know, a gap filler as well as force multiplier for the Indian Navy. Imagine the make 29Ks that already are being operated from INS Vikrant and INS Vikrant and Ditya. Once the Rafal Marine, the Rafal M aircraft are inducted, then they can also be operated in either batches or completely deployed on any aircraft carrier that is going into any kind of operations. So, it's very crucial that these aircraft are included at this point in time because any drive of indigenization will also require the Indian Armed Forces to be ready with some weaponry for that period till the time the aircraft are inducted properly into the Indian Navy. So, it's not as if we are moving away from indigenization, but till the time indigenization happens, other Rafal Ms are going to form the backbone of the aviation in the Indian Navy.
Akshay, also, Rafal M jets will be customized to meet Indian requirements and will be integrated into INS Vikrant, like we already said. And it will obviously play a critical role in supporting the Navy's operational capabilities. Also, tell us, Akshay, first batch expected to arrive by when?
Well, what we are expecting is once the order is finally given for these Rafal Ms, it's going to take a couple of years before the first batches arrive in India. So, the timeline, the estimated timeline that we're looking at right now, even if there is a government-to-government contract, then we can see the Rafal Ms coming in by 2028 to 2029 is the estimate that the Rafal Ms may come. They can also come slightly earlier than that, but not later is what the expectations are because the requirements of the Indian Navy are to operate these jets from both of their aircraft carriers, which is a crucial thing according to the Indian Navy and the experts as well. So, the first batch is expected to arrive at 2028, 2029 and till that time, we have to make do with the make 29 aircraft. And after that, till the time the TED BF aircraft are inducted into the Indian Navy, we'll have ample space and ample time for the operations to continue by the Indian Navy.
Also, Akshay, last question before we leave you. The Rafal Marine deal, I mean, it showcases the strengthening defence ties between India and France?
Absolutely, absolutely, Abhishek. Because when we saw the Indian Air Force acquiring Rafal jets, it was a boost not only to the Indian Armed Forces, but also what we significantly saw that when a country like India acquires any kind of weaponry from any other third country, then it gives a huge boost to that company as well. It's sort of an endorsement that, you know, a country has advanced, that India is also putting weight on those products. And after that, we saw several other countries like Egypt and other countries across the world, you know, ordering Rafal jets similar to India. So, that gave a huge boost to not only assault, but also the French real defence industry. So, clearly, if we are purchasing such high-tech and cutting-edge technology from France, then it is obviously going to boost our defence type as well.
All right, Akshay, we'll leave it at that. Thank you for your inputs. The Indian Navy successfully carried out multiple anti-ship missile firings in the Armin Sea, affirming its commitment to protecting the nation's maritime interests. Indian Navy ships undertook successful multiple anti-ship firings to revalidate and demonstrate readiness of platforms, systems and crew for long-range precision offensive strike. In a statement released on X, the Navy said that it stands combat-ready, credible and future-ready in safeguarding the nation's maritime interests anytime, anywhere, anyhow. All right, moving further, Indian Prime Minister Narendra Modi has announced rupees 2 lakh ex-Krsia for the kin of each of the 12 people who lost their lives in an accident in Madhya Pradesh's Mundsoor district on Sunday. In a post on social media platform X, the Prime Minister expressed condolences to the bereaved families and prayed for the speedy recovery of those injured. An ex-Krsia of rupees 50,000 has also been announced for the injured. The tragic accident occurred when a speeding van plunged into the well after hitting a bike, leaving 12 persons dead. Earlier, Madhya Pradesh Chief Minister Mohan Yadav also expressed his grief of the loss of 12 lives in Mundsoor accident and announced rupees 2 lakh each to the kin of the deceased. Ayushman cards will be issued to the people of Delhi from Monday, providing them access to affordable healthcare services. As part of the initiative, senior citizens aged 70 years or above will be eligible for free medical treatment worth up to rupees 10 lakh under the Ayushman Bharat scheme. The Ayushman Bharat card, also known as the Pradhamantrian Jan Arugya Yujana, is a flagship health insurance scheme that was launched to achieve the vision of universal health coverage. This initiative has been designed to meet sustainable development goals and its underlying commitment, which is to leave no one behind. A gradual change in temperatures will be seen across regions of India in the next few days. In northwest India, the maximum temperatures will first increase and then slightly fall, while central and east India look to have a small initial fall in wave temperature trend. Heatwave conditions are expected to persist across several northern and central areas of India and hot and humid across some areas in the west and south. In Delhi and Sia, there have been rise in temperature in the last 24 hours with mostly clear skies and moderate wind levels. Also, some regions of Uttar Pradesh, Bihar and West Bengal are likely to get some relief due to light rainfall expected in these parts. The northeastern and southern states are likely to get light to heavy rainfall in the upcoming days. Shifting focus, Canadian voters are all set to cast their ballot today after months of uncertainty influenced by US President Donald Trump's unpredictable global tariff policies. Canadian Prime Minister Mahkarni called for April 28 election in March, shortly after replacing former Prime Minister Justin Trudeau. Voters will choose their local representative to the House of Commons, but the ballot will not include a direct vote for Prime Minister. Mahkarni and Conservative leader Pierre Poliva campaigned across the country on Sunday, the final day of a five-week campaign, making their pitches to the voters. Khani met with supporters in Saskatchewan after making a case a day earlier in Ontario that he is best placed to steer Canada through a crisis triggered by Trump's tariffs. Poliva has promised to reduce spending on foreign aid and acts of federal sales tax on Canadian-made autos as long as US tariffs are in place. All right, still to come on this edition of DD India News Hour, US Philippine troops shoot down drones in joint defence drills. We get to the latest developments in the US attempts to end the Russia-Ukraine conflict. Even as US efforts to end the Russia-Ukraine conflict gain momentum, North Korea confirmed sending troops to fight for Russia and Ukraine. You already danced to Bollywood music at weddings. Now imagine the whole world dancing to our stories too. World Audio Visual and Entertainment Summit Waves is where we make Indian entertainment truly international. To jaldi tayyar ho jaiye, duniya ko apni dhun par nachane ke liye, bas saath din aur. Welcome back, you're watching DD India News Hour. I'm Abhishek Mahajan. After the suspension of Indus Water Treaty and other crackdown by the Indian government on Pakistan, as the centre has banned several Pakistani YouTube channels following the Pelgam terror attack, sixteen Pakistani YouTube channels with a total of sixty-three million subscribers have been banned in India for spreading provocative and communally sensitive content in the aftermath of the Pelgam terror attack. The YouTube channels have been banned on the Union Home Ministry's recommendations. The banned platforms include YouTube channels of news outlets Dawn, Samar TV, A R Y News, Bol News, Raftar, Geo News and Suno News. YouTube channels of journalists Irshad Bhatti, Astma Shirazi, Umar Chima and Munee Farukh have also been banned. Other handles that have been banned include the Pakistan Reference, Samar Sports, Uzak Cricket and Razinama. On the recommendations of the Ministry of Home Affairs, Government of India has banned sixteen Pakistani YouTube channels for disseminating provocative and communally sensitive content, false and misleading narratives and misinformation against India, its army and security agencies in the backdrop of the tragic Pelgam terror incident in Jammu and Kashmir. And also, India has conveyed its strong sentiments to the BBC India head regarding its reporting on the Pelgam terror attack. ASX PD conveyed the country's strong sentiments to Jackie Martin, India head BBC regarding their reporting on the terror attack. Former letter has been written to BBC on terming terrorists as militants in their news dispatches. All right, so a strong step taken by India on Pakistan YouTube channel, sixteen Pakistani YouTube channels have been banned with a total of sixty-three million subscribers. They have been banned in India for spreading provocative and communally sensitive content in the aftermath of the Pelgam terror attack. All right, DD India's Ravi Dhiman has more information on this, is joining us on the phone line. Ravi, strong step taken by the Indian government on banning sixteen Pakistani YouTube channels?
Yes, see, these Pakistani YouTube channels were following the attacks from their government, disseminating provocative content, trying to clear communal, you know, sentiments in India and they were engaging in very false narratives against the, against the Indian agencies, as they have been doing for the past many years. But in the aftermath of this Dr. D. Pelgam terror attack, all these channels have crossed the red lines in their, in disseminating these provocative content and, you know, trying to clear up communal tensions in India with their sensitive content. And it was a no-hold-bar, you know, narrative, sort of a carpet bombing against India and the Indian agencies that led the government to take this firm and very important, we can say, very right step.
Also, Ravi, India has conveyed its strong sentiments to the BBC India head regarding its reporting on the Pelgam terror attack. It writes to the BBC over G N K reportage?
Yes, the BBC reporting drew many criticism within India and rightly so because they termed the terrorists as militants. The same New York Times in its reporting said, termed those terrorists as militants for their own House Committee in the US Corrupted Bar and termed them as terrorists, plain and simply. And the BBC also termed these terrorists who, you know, after the attack, pick people, truck drivers in front of their daughters and sons and just family members and yet, you know, channels like the BBC and, you know, media houses, other media houses have many things and not as terrorists, which is the right, you know, designation for these people. And the Government of India has conveyed the sentiment, the entire country's sentiment. They see what is being told and a formal letter has been also issued to them and the government has also ensured that it will be monitoring the reporting of the BBC handful. So the BBC will have to, you know, get the reportage right and terming terrorists as militants is completely unacceptable.
Absolutely, a strong step taken by the Indian government for those who have crossed the red line. Thank you, Ravi, thank you for inputs. Moving on, Israel struck South Beirut on Sunday, marking the third incident since the November twenty-seventh ceasefire. The strike drew criticism from Lebanese President Josephon, who called on France and the US to intervene and enforce the ceasefire. Whereas Israeli PM Benjamin Netanyahu's office stated that the strike targeted a Hezbollah facility storing precision-guided missiles in Beirut's southern suburbs. Israel military had warned civilians to evacuate the area beforehand. Netanyahu's office said Israel will not allow Hezbollah to grow stronger and create any threat against it anywhere in Lebanon. Meanwhile, the UN Special Coordinator for Lebanon, Jeanine Hennes Plaskot, urged all parties to avoid actions that could destabilise the ceasefire, citing panic and fear among civilians. Meanwhile, Israel carried out another operation, a drone strike in the border town of Halta on Sunday, which killed one person, reportedly a Hezbollah militant, according to Israel. Despite the November truce, Israel has continued to conduct strikes in Lebanon and its troops remain in several positions in southern Lebanon deemed strategic. Now, the US military decided not to reveal specific details about its military strikes in Yemen, citing what it called the need to preserve operational security while also saying the strikes had lethal effects on Houthi rebels. Republican President Donald Trump ordered the intensification of US strikes on Yemen last month, with his administration saying it will continue assaulting Iran-backed Houthi rebels until they stop attacking Red Sea shipping. Washington says the strikes aim to cut off Houthi military and economic capabilities while minimising civilian harm. Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu has called for the complete dismantling of Iran's nuclear programme, stating that any deal with Iran must address its ballistic missile capabilities. He emphasised that Iran should not have the capacity to enrich uranium for nuclear weapons. This stance comes as Iran and the US hold nuclear talks, with both sides reporting progress. The talks aim to find a solution after the collapse of a twenty-fifteen nuclear accord between Iran and major powers.
Ballistic missiles, the prevention of the development of ballistic missiles into the deal, I think these are the two requirements. I said to President Trump that I hope that this is what the negotiators will do when close contact with the United States. But I said one way or the other, Iran will not have nuclear weapons. The way to prevent it is to dismantle all the infrastructure of Iran's nuclear programme.
Iran is reeling after a devastating explosion tore through Shahidrajai port near the vital strait of Hormuz, killing at least forty and injuring over one thousand. Eyewitness footage showed rescue workers from the Iranian Red Crescent dropping fire retardants from aircraft onto raging flames. The blast near the critical strait of Hormuz blanketed Bandar Abbas in toxic smoke, shutting down schools and offices. Supreme Leader Ayatollah Ali Khamenei has ordered a full investigation into possible negligence or foul play. President Masood Paisekhan visited the scene and pledged urgent support for the victims. Fires fuelled by hazardous chemicals raged for hours as Russia rushed specialists to assist. Though port operations have partly resumed, twisted wreckage and smoke still cloud the area. Now, US President Donald Trump on Sunday called on Russia to halt its ongoing attacks against Ukraine, even as his administration signaled growing frustration with stalled peace efforts. Trump said he was disappointed by Russia's continued aggression and described his recent meeting with Ukrainian President Volodymyr Zelensky as productive. Here's more. US President Donald Trump has called on Russia to stop its attacks on Ukraine, expressing disappointment at Moscow's continued aggression. Trump said his meeting with Ukrainian President Volodymyr Zelensky at the Vatican had gone well, describing Zelensky as calm and willing to make a deal.
I think the meeting went well. We'll see what happens over the next few days. We'll probably learn a lot. I was very disappointed that missiles were flying by Russia, but that missiles were flying, very disappointing. We'll see how it goes.
Following his meeting with Zelensky, Trump criticised Russian President Vladimir Putin, saying there is no reason for Russia to bomb civilian areas.
Well, I want him to stop shooting, sit down and sign a deal. And we have the confines of a deal, I believe. And I want him to sign it and be done with it and, and just go back to life.
US Secretary of State Marco Rubio has described the coming week very critical for US attempts to end the conflict.
Well, I always think it's silly to set a specific date or whatever, but I can just tell you that almost a hundred days into this presidency, the president has dedicated a tremendous amount of time and energy to this. And we think we brought the sides closer than they've been in a very long time, but we're not there yet and it needs to start happening. We need to start, I think this is going to be a very critical week.
Meanwhile, Russian Foreign Minister Sergey Lavrov said in a televised interview that Crimea is a done deal and is not being discussed in the negotiations with Ukraine.
President Trump said Crimea is not even being discussed right now.
Yes, because this is a done deal.
You mean Russia occupies and controls and will not negotiate the future of Crimea? Is that what you're saying?
Russia do not negotiate its own territory.
Neither Zelensky nor Putin have publicly responded to Trump's latest comments. Ukraine has repeatedly rejected making any territorial concessions, stressing that issues about land should only be discussed once a ceasefire is agreed. Bureau report, DD India. Now, North Korea has confirmed for the first time that it has deployed troops to fight alongside Russia in Ukraine. Acting on orders from leader Kim Jong-un, North Korean forces reportedly helped liberate Russia's Scourge region, a move hailed by Pyongyang as proof of an unbreakable alliance. KCNA state media called their fighters heroes, highlighting the deepening military pact sealed by Kim and President Putin last year. North Korea sent an estimated total of fourteen thousand troops, including three thousand reinforcements to replace its losses, Ukrainian officials reported. Despite suffering heavy losses due to limited equipment and battlefield experience, North Korean forces adapted swiftly. Russia, after months of silence, has now acknowledged their presence. At a time of simmering tensions between, with Beijing over the South China Sea, US and Philippine soldiers shot down drones with stringer missiles during live-fire drills on Sunday, part of annual joint military exercises. More than fourteen thousand Filipino and US troops are participating in this year's shoulder-to-shoulder exercises, which run until May nine, focusing on a full battle test between the two defence treaty allies in response to regional security concerns. China has criticised the drills as provocative. Ties between Beijing and Manila are the worst in years amid frequent confrontations, and they disputed what a way that has sparked concerns of a military conflict. Cardinals from all over the world have begun convening in Rome to prepare to hold a conclave to select a successor for Pope Francis. Dozens of so-called princes of the church from across the world have been gathering at the Vatican. At seven hundred GMT on Monday, they will hold their fifth meeting, at which they are likely to fix a conclave date. Experts have suggested it may take place on May five or six, shortly after the nine days of Papal Mourning, which ends on May four. There are two fifty-two Cardinals, but only one thirty-five of them are aged under eighty and therefore eligible to vote for a new pope. Most are relatively young and for many, it is their first conclave. The vote held in the Sistine Chapel is highly secretive and follows strict rules and ceremonial procedures. All right, we are slipping into another short break. On the other side, more stories. Keep watching DD India News Hour.
Complex issues, hidden agendas, twists and turns, strategic games. We think all dots are linked, we just need to connect them. Join me every week as I connect the dots to unravel hidden designs and statecraft, mysteries and decode issues that matter to you. Watch Connecting the Dots with me at these times on DD India.
Welcome back, you're watching DD India News Hour. I'm Abhishek Mahajan. Business updates now. Asian share markets and the dollar made a cautious start on Monday as confusion over US trade policy showed little sign of easing in a week packed with major economic data and mega tech earnings. Early action in markets was light with broader index of Asia-Pacific shares outside Japan edging up point one percent. Japan's Nikkei rose point nine percent while South Korea confirmed point two percent. Going the other way, S and P five hundred futures dipped point four percent in early trade while Nasdaq futures eased point five percent. The S and P has bounced almost twelve percent from April eight trough, but remains ten percent below its peak. The week is also packed with economic news, including US employment, gross domestic product and core inflation. The dollar index was steady at ninety-nine point six nine five, above last week's low of ninety-seven point nine two three, while the euro held at one point one three five zero dollars and shot off its recent top at one point one five seven eight three dollars. Sports updates now, we'll start with football. Liverpool secured their twentieth English top flight title with a stunning five-one victory over Tottenham Hotspur at an electrified Anfield on Sunday, sealing a record equaling crown in emphatic style. It was surely an emotional moment for Liverpool manager Unzlot, along with thousands of Liverpool fans who gathered at Anfield. Let's take a look for more from the day.
English Premier League club Liverpool created history as they wrapped up the Premier League title in style on a momentous day at Anfield. The Reds rode back from a goal behind to thrash Tottenham Hotspur five-one to edge their names in England's footballing history. Goals from Luis Diaz, Alexi McElister, Cody Hagpo and a one- Goals from Louis Diaz, Alexi McElister, Cody Hagpo and a one-sided second-half shot from Mohamed Saleh ensured the Reds clinched the title in style. It was indeed an emotional moment for Liverpool manager Arne Slot, who becomes the fifth manager to win a Premier League title in his first season in England and the first Dutch boss to win one. Speaking at the post-match conference, Slot said the enormity of the accomplishment will take a while to sink in.
Very, very happy, of course, but to a certain extent also quite unreal, because you've, you've worked so hard for this moment to happen and when it then does happen, it needs some time for you to truly feel it. But the fans were, were so happy that it didn't took us long, it didn't took me long to, to understand what we've achieved together.
Thousands of Liverpool fans wasted no time in getting the party started as they gathered outside the stadium, sang, chanted and waved championship flags as red smoke formed flares filled the air as their favorite club marched into a decisive victory.
And also with Arne Slot coming in, I just think, yeah, amazing statement and seamless transition. If anything, we've got better.
Oh, great feeling, best feeling ever, like to be in there from last time when we had to sit at home and do it, but this time it's just special, wasn't it?
Oh my God, 5-1, absolutely stunning performance by the Red Men, so proud.
With a record extending 20th Premier League title, Liverpool have now matched Manchester United at the top of the all-time list. Sports desk, DD India.
Cricket now, Royal challengers Bangalore clinched top spot in the ongoing Indian Premier League with a six-wicket win over Delhi Capitals at the Arun Jethli Stadium on Sunday, chasing 1623 for the victory. Krunal Pandya blasted a 47-ball 73 as Bangalore achieved the target with nine balls to spare. Virat Kohli also hit a sixth-half century of the season to claim the orange cap momentarily. He scored 51-run knockout on 50-47 deliveries. Meanwhile, for Delhi, KL Rahul topscored with a 39-ball 41, but Delhi lost wickets in regular intervals before Tristan Stubbs, 18-ball 34, lifted them to a competitive total of 162 for 8. Praveeneshwar Kumar and Josh Hazelwood snapped three and two wickets respectively, while Krunal Pandya and Yash Dayal accounted for one wicket each to restrict Delhi Capitals. Now Ethiopia's Tis Assefa set record at the London Marathon on Sunday. The 28-year-old Assefa, silver medallist at the Paris Olympics, crossed the finish line in 2 hours 15 minutes and 50 seconds, beating the previous record set by Kenyan Peris Jep Chair in London last year. The 28-year-old finished well clear of Kenya's Joycelin Jep Skosuke while Sifan Hassan was third. Kenya Sebastian Sawe produced a blistering performance to win the men's London Marathon on Sunday. The 29-year-old came home ahead of Uganda's world half-marathon record holder Jacob Keplimo, defending champion Alexander Muniaw, edged up the Nagie for third in a photo finish. In a vibrant celebration of growing India-Japan ties, the Embassy of India in Tokyo hosted Hokkaido Day, highlighting the charm and promise of Japan's northernmost island. The event featured a cultural exchange, including a yoga session, dignitaries including the Speaker of the Hokkaido Legislative Assembly and Governor Tai Mochi Suzuki emphasized Hokkaido's unique significance. India's ambassador to Japan, C B George, underlined the growing importance of regional partnerships in driving India-Japan relationship forward. The event was a melting pot of cultures, bringing together a diverse group of Japanese and Indian attendees.
Today what we have is the prefecture day related to Hokkaido. Hokkaido is an important prefecture in Chippa and honorable governor, honorable speaker of the assembly, members of the assembly, businessmen from there, they are all present here. We are celebrating Hokkaido-India partnership today and this will also lead to further engagement like an economic seminar we are organizing. We are setting up a India parliamentary group within the Hokkaido Assembly and of course, I would like to have the governor to lead a business delegation to India this year. We are building this relationship between our states and the prefectures and also between the prefectures and, and India as a whole. So we are seeing that a lot of visits from our states to Japan and also a lot of prefectures from, from Japan to India.
Well, that's all we have in this edition of DD India News Hour, but do let us know your thoughts on the news of the day. For those on the go, you can get all the latest news and updates from India and across the world on DD India mobile app. The app is available on both Android and iOS. Scan the QR code on the screen to download now. And we'll be back with more news as it breaks here on DD India. I'm Abhishek Mahajan from all of us here in Delhi. Thanks for watching DD India News Hour.